We now call this meeting the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out to the meeting tonight and also those that'll be watching the meeting and the replays on G-10 television. We've got quite a few folks here tonight. And we're going to begin with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Chapter Five, Rolling Thunder. Our local chapter here are going to lead us. If y'all will come up, please, and lead us in the pledge. And we will follow that by the invocation by John Carter, our city attorney. Please rise.
(inaudible) 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 You were right, Mr. Carter. We were blessed with a beautiful day in Jacksonville, North Carolina today. Beautiful autumn day. Counsel, you have before you copy the agenda for tonight's meeting? And I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of the agenda with one modification. That would be on the consent items to add an item declaring council's intent to name its voting delegation for the National League of Cities Conference. That voting delegation being Councilman Willingham as the principal delegate and Councilman Washington as the alternate.
Second. Any discussion here? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Have some presentations to make. Someone will come around front here. Okay. For the first presentation tonight, these are civilian commendation awards. I'd like to ask Chief Mike Inero and Dominique Evans and Jessica Melton from Home to Suites if you would join me up front here, please.
Jessica. Thank you very much, ladies, for joining us this evening. On Saturday, August 8, 2015, while working at Home to Suites at 139th Circuit Lane here in Jacksonville, Jessica Melton and Dominique Evans heard noise coming from the pool area of the hotel. Jessica Melton observed a four-year-old child underwater in the pool. She dove into the pool and brought the victim to the surface of the water. Dominique pulled the child out of the pool. Ms. Melton and Ms. Evans initiated lifesaving actions resulting in the child returning to consciousness. Other employees called 911 or 911 and guided first responders to the pool area. The immediate response and life-sustaining efforts by these two ladies resulted in the victim regaining consciousness and being able to continue life. Their actions resulted in preventing a tragedy and are very worthy of the civilian commendation award. Is the child here tonight? They're a family? Okay. But I would like to present to you, Chief, if you would present these here. We have our civilian commendation for Jessica Melton and also for Dominique Evans. And thank you, ladies, for your fast thinking and your fast action. Somebody owes you a great debt. (applause) Julie, you got these? Thank you, ladies. That's very heroic. With our next presentation for tonight, I'm going to let this one, I'm going to invite Paul Levesque if you join me up front here. And I'm going to let you do the presenting here. As the Department of Veterans Affairs has designated the City of Jacksonville as an official regional site for Veterans Day observances for the fifth year in a row. And we appreciate everything that Rolling Thunder does as far as, you know, all the things you do in this community to keep the spirit alive, to remember our POWs and MIAs.
That's our honor. I'd like to ask the chapter members, please come up, they're the ones that make this thing work.
Come on, back up here again.
They're the ones that actually make this thing work, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
They deserve the recognition.
Definitely. Hard-working bunch. Go ahead, Paul.
I don't know how long this has been going on as far as we're receiving. I think I've lost track of how many years we've received this regional site designation from the Department of Veterans Affairs. But I think it's probably the fifth year that we've been recognized in that regard. And we, the chapter here, has been organizing and putting on this Veterans Day parade for 11 years now. This will be our 11th year of the 20 that this parade has been existence in Onslow County and Jacksonville in particular. And so the Department of the Veterans Affairs looks at sites that observe Veterans Day. And we can actually apply to be recognized nationwide as a regional site for the observances of Veterans Day. And this is, I think, is a pretty big honor for Jacksonville to be recognized for supporting our veterans and honoring them on Veterans Day. And I have received the certificate from the Department of Veterans Affairs, and I'll read it. From the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Veterans Day National Committee hereby designates the City of Jacksonville, North Carolina, as a regional site for the observance of Veterans Day 2015. Signed by Robert A. McDonald, Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Chairman, Veterans Day National Committee.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. (applause)
I'd like to put a plug in for the parade, too. Absolutely. Absolutely.
We also have a Veterans Day, official Veterans Day poster for the, from the VA as well, to present to the city. And maybe you can find a prominent place to.
We definitely will. We absolutely, absolutely.
And for those out there and those watching on G-10, I just want to put a plug in. November 7, Saturday, we're going to have the parade out here at the, on Western Boulevard starting at 10:00 a.m. from Coastal Carolina Community College. It'll roll down Western Boulevard the same way it's always been. Our parade chairperson is accepting applications until the 23rd, which is this coming Friday. If you'd like to receive an application, please contact her or you can visit our Rolling Thunder NC5 website. But her number is 910-389-4566, so you can call her as well. But please come out. The parade is free to enter. It doesn't cost anything. What we would really like to see is a lot of participants and a lot of the public lined up on both sides of Western Boulevard as this parade rolls down the road. And the mayor will be leading, he'll be up front in the parade again, as he always is. So come on out and support it. Support our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. (applause) I know everybody loves a parade, so let's come out and support our veterans on the parade. It's always, it's always a great event. There's a lot of participants in the parade, so let's crowd the street that day. Linda, you're going to get a lot of phone calls, hopefully.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause) For the next proclamation, we're going to, we're going to do a little something for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I'd like to invite Jackie Mitchell from the Onslow Women's Health Fund. Jackie, do you have somebody else with you here tonight? Okay, just, just you, huh? Well, that's a plenty. Thank you. We're very proud to be able to give this proclamation tonight. And if you allow me, I will read it aloud. Whereas breast cancer, one of the most common cancers among American women, affects roughly 230,000 women as well as 2,300 men each year and is responsible for more than 40,000 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which offers us an opportunity to raise awareness of this disease and its symptoms so we can more easily identify it and more effectively treat it. And whereas we must arm ourselves with the best knowledge, tools, and resources available to fight this devastating disease. And whereas regular screenings and quality care are vital to improving outcomes for millions of people, together we must ensure all people can enjoy the extraordinary gift that is a long, happy, and healthy life. During National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, let us remember those cancer, those cancer folks that were taken by cancer way too soon. And in tribute to them, their families, and our medical professionals, let us recommit to the promise of finding a cure. And whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment. Now, therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim October 2015 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Jacksonville. And I encourage citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of this serious health concern. And I want to thank you for coming tonight and thank you for all that you do to make people aware of this serious disease. Would you like to say something?
On behalf of the Onslow Women's Health Fund, I would like to thank all of you that you allowed us to be represented tonight for the Breast Cancer Awareness Program. We evolved about eight years ago, and we help women here in Onslow County that are underprivileged and underinsured to have care that they need, required by physicians, whether it be for breast cancer or any other medical care. We receive our funding through United Way, and we also have an annual Bunko Tournament called Go Green for the Girls in March. So please come out, support us, and have a good time. And thanks again for recognizing us on this evening.
Thank you. Next, for the next presentation, I'd like to ask Chief Mike Inero, Captain Ashley Weaver, Sergeant Philip Williams, and Officer Vanessa Smith, and Nick Broninger, Recreation and Citywide Services Supervisor, if they'll join me up front here.
Susan Baptist is here.
Susan Baptist is also here. I also have some, some representatives from the Special Olympics that are here also. I know Elisa Tello.
Tello.
Hey, and once I get fancy, I mispronounced it, right? I'm sorry. And Ryan Baker. Ryan's not here?
Yeah.
Okay. But any of your other folks that would come up with you, please? I know you like to do knuckles. There you go. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. Running with the law was a five-kilometer race held on August 1st as a partner component of the National Night Out activities. This is the third year for this popular event coordinated by members of the JPD, or Jacksonville Police Department Traffic Division, and Recreation and Parks to benefit North Carolina Special Olympics. Over 150 runners participated in the race this time, which has been, has become a national tradition, or an annual tradition here with the National Night Out. We have a check in the amount of a lot. We have a check here. Thank you, chief. You're going to enjoy this, okay? All right. We have a check here in the amount of $3,445 made out to the Special Olympics of North Carolina. And I'd like to present you with this check at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I especially want to thank all these folks over here who worked so hard to make that possible for these folks here, you know? Would you like to say a word or two? Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, you're good. But anyway, thank you very much. Thank you much, team, for what you do out there as far as making this a reality here because, you know, to see, to see the faces here and see what this means to them, you know, it really is, is quite a contribution that you make. And thank you very much. (applause)
That was very nice there.
We have, now, we have a nice presentation here. This is for some bicycle helmets for a safety initiative project with Onslow Memorial Hospital. And I want to ask Dr. Timothy Pitcellus.
Not here.
Not here tonight. He's a trauma surgeon out there at the hospital. Also Trish Kramer, who's an RN. Trish. Amy Sousa, Vice President of Public Relations. And I would also like to ask Chief Inero back up again, along with Sergeant Denise Peters. What you got there?
Okay. So we're excited to have this opportunity to present all these bicycle helmets on behalf of Onslow Memorial's trauma program to the Jacksonville Police Department. One of the purposes of our trauma program is to provide excellence in trauma care and prevent injuries. One of them is the Bailey Bonkers, which is to prevent head injuries. Okay? So we have some helmets that we'd like to present to the police department that they're going to be giving out to members of our community that can't afford or don't have access to helmets.
First, tell them how many helmets there are.
Right now, there's 100, but we're hoping to get more in the future. We do things with the Kohl's Care Initiative and some other outreach programs that have helped us to help fund getting these helmets for you. Hopefully, when you're driving around and you see a child in need, that you're going to be able to reach in the trunk of your vehicle and give them to them. And if, the goal of our program is if we can prevent one head injury, one traumatic brain injury, then we've met our goal, so.
Thank you. Dr. Williams.
I'd like to.
Chief, I'll come back. Picture. Thank you very much. That is very special, y'all did that.
Y'all just get a little closer, like, if I need y'all.
Don't worry about it. It doesn't take much, so it will change their life, really.
Doesn't. Everybody here in this room is here for the health and welfare of the citizens in Bob's Lake County. We really hope to, in the future, to have a lot more programs like this, with community outreach, that we can educate everyone and have presentations like this, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. (applause) That's really great. I appreciate that. I know a lot of people really do, you know, especially people that have children that, you know, can't afford to go and buy one like that, you know? It's very nice of you to, you ought to step forward and do that in the community. Next, I have some folks here that I want to recognize, and I'm going to ask Carmella George, Carmella is here, to join me up front. And we're going to, we're going to graduate some people. We're going to recognize them for their, for their studying here. And I'm going to hand these to you. And if you, what this is, folks, is something I'm hoping will catch on even more than what it has. This is, how many years have we done this now?
Four.
Four. This is the fourth year that we've done this. And this is our, this is our Citizen Academy. This will be our, our fourth class that has gone through. This is the graduating class of 2015 that we're going to honor here tonight. The Jacksonville Citizen Academy is designed to offer citizen, city residents who are interested in becoming more involved in local government and its activities, an opportunity to learn a little bit about what, what goes on up here, not just in City Hall, but what happens all in, throughout the city as far as the city being able to deliver the services that we deliver to the citizenry. I know that our, that they spent like two hours weekly for five weeks, and they covered all these things from the general government here in the city, some of the different departments they went through. They got a little bit of the dose of the budget, which we get a dose of it every year or two. But also, you know, and understanding the role of elected officials. Plus, they looked at the Public Services Department, Recreation and Parks, the Police and Fire Department, the Public Safety, what we call the Public Safety Department now, and Development, Development Services and the Transit, City's Transit System. So you get a good feel, get a good look at what's going on within your city. And tonight, these certificates are being presented to those folks that actually made it through that tough curriculum there. It's not a tough curriculum, but it's, it's, hopefully, it's, hopefully, the folks that went through it got a lot out of it, got a lot of good information out of it. So I'm going to ask them to all come up. I'm going to call your name, and you can come up and get your certificate if you're here. If you're not here, you can't come get it. It'll be mailed to you. Craig Belial. Did I get it right, Craig?
Yeah.
Close enough. Edward Blizzard. Michael Claiborne. Michael's here, right? There. There he is. Sergio Garcia. Richard Holton. Christian Jones. You're awful young, aren't you?
A little bit.
Christopher's did this as his, part of his senior project. And which school did you go to?
Jacksonville.
Jacksonville High School. Thank you, Christopher. Paula Jones. Bobby McLean. Tony Ross. And I have several folks that aren't, weren't able to be with us tonight, but I'm going to read them off anyway. We have Michael Beagle. Samantha Braddall. Joyce Field. Bernard Lane. Angela Rodiere. Autumn Bishop. And David Marshburn. Let's give these folks another round of applause for having it completed. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We have to have beauty in the front. That's. I wasn't talking about you.
Thank you again, folks, for your participation.
Hang on, we still have two more.
Y'all can come up front.
Yes, sir, Sergeant.
Sergeant.
Isn't that cute?
This is our sergeant, Sergeant.
Second, I know somebody came solely for the presentations. I'm going to take a little pause here because we've got a couple items in here that may take a little bit of time up, so I'll give you an opportunity to leave. You're welcome to stay, but.
Thank you all for coming.
(inaudible)
How are you doing? How are you doing? How's your friend doing? I love it. Wonderful.
Yeah, that's where I think they moved Carolina to work.
Mike Claiborne, Mike is here, right? There. You're awful young, aren't you? Christopher's did this as part of his senior project, and which school did you go to?
Jacksonville.
Jacksonville High School. Thank you, Christopher. Paula Jones. And I have several folks that weren't able to be with us tonight, but I'm gonna read them off anyway. We have Michael Beagle. Samantha Braddall. Joyce Field. Bernard Lane. Angela Rodiere. Autumn Bishop. And David Marshburn. Let's give these folks another round of applause for having it completed. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We have to have beauty in the front. I wasn't talking about you.
Thank you again, folks, for your participation.
Hang on, we still have two more in the back. Y'all can come up front.
One, isn't that cute?
pause here, because we got a couple items in here that may take a little bit of time up, so I'll give you an opportunity to leave. You're welcome to stay, but... Thank you all for coming.
How are you doing? Fine, how's your granddaddy? I love it. Wonderful.
Yeah, that's where I think they moved Caroline to work.
All right, we'll be back in session now, and that's gonna bring us to our first session of public comment for the evening. I have no one that has signed the official sign-up sheet, but I know sometimes we pick it up a little bit before the meeting starts, and if anyone came in that wishes to speak, if you'd indicate by raising your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we're gonna move on along here, and we're gonna adopt our consent items, we're gonna try to adopt the consent items in the minutes from a September 22nd, 2015 Special Workshop Meeting, and a September 22nd, 2015 Regular Meeting. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to a public hearing, which should be under Item Number Six in the agenda, and this is a rezoning from residential, single-family to corridor commercial at 2453 Piney Green Road, and I guess Ryan's gonna present this item.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Item Six before you this evening is a rezoning request submitted by Alonzo Brimmer and Jason Hill for a .54-acre tract located on Piney Green Road, that's physical address 2453 Piney Green Road. On the screen before you tonight, the vicinity map shows NC24, or Highway 24 at the south. So it's shortly, in a couple miles up Piney Green Road from Highway 24. An aerial photograph shows that this area is surrounded by properties that are either undeveloped, church, single-family dwellings. Across the street, you have some mobile homes and some other undeveloped property. There's currently a building that was built in the 90s located on this site. It was originally slated to be occupied as a church, never quite got opened, or so it appears. Across Piney Green Road, you can see the residential mobile home across the street. Looking towards NC24, you can see there's some single-family dwelling on the opposite side of Piney Green Road, some vacant property immediately adjacent to the property. Looking towards Wadok High School, or Highway 17 to the north. The future land use plan for the Piney Green Road corridor in this area identifies this as a mixed-use type development, so the applicant's request to rezone it from the green zone, or the RSF 20 zone, to corridor commercial does meet the long-range plans as identified in the Camel Land Use Plan. The Planning Advisory Board met last week, and they recommended unanimously, along with staff, that the rezoning be approved based on findings of facts A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities and makes it consistent with the future land use map. Ms. Lori Morris is here with Parkin Associates. Should you have any questions of either staff or the applicant's representative? Do you have to answer any questions at this time?
Counsel, any questions of Mr. King? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to conduct a public hearing in this matter, and I'm gonna reassess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter, so please indicate by raising your hand. I see no one, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the request here.
Mayor Phillips, I move that we approve the zoning request based on findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities, and it makes it consistent with our future land use map.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, and this is a Alonzo Community Outreach Request for Funding, and Lily Gray, our Community Development Administrator, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Back in January of this year, City Council agreed to provide $250,000 in community development block grant funding to Alonzo Community Outreach to assist in the acquisition and relocation of their existing homeless shelter to the former Piggly Wiggly building. Since that time, the special use permit that you approved has been a subject of litigation, which has delayed their ability to proceed with that project. As a result, they have released the $250,000 commitment that you made, and we are before you tonight asking that a portion of those funds be used to continue with... I apologize, I missed a part. They have proceeded to actually acquire the building, even though they know at this time it cannot be used for a homeless shelter. They are before you tonight asking for $150,000 of the $250,000 that's been returned to help with the installation of the sprinkler system and needed repairs to the facility, so that it can be used for the soup kitchen, Christmas cheer, and other neighborhood-related activities. So that is our request before you tonight, if you have any questions.
Is that the only condition there, was that it not be used as a homeless shelter?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Is that the only condition?
That is the condition now, as a result of the lawsuit, it cannot be used as a homeless shelter, that is yet to be decided.
But all the other uses are valid?
Are eligible, yes.
And fit that zoning, okay. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Gray?
I just wanna ask one question. We were using funds left over from a program called CREATE.
Yes.
Is that the identical funds we're using for this?
Yes, the same source of funding, that funding has been replaced into the CDBG account, and is now available for eligible CDBG activities.
Oh, great, okay.
Is there... No questions, no. Okay. Right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Is Dr. Herring gonna make any presentation?
I think he's probably ready if need be. Dr. Herring, would you like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, elected officials of council, Don Herring, Five-O-Five Waters Edge Tribe, St. Louis, North Carolina. We appreciate the opportunity that the City Council has afforded Alonzo Community Outreach, and the initial offering or the allowing of the community development block grant resources to be assembled for the initial purchase of that property to help us toward the homeless shelter. We do recognize that we're in kind of an opportunity of a due process right now of an adjacent property owner who has this tied up in litigation here. We've had to weigh this, the due process rights of the adjacent property owner versus the opportunity to acquire a building. As many of you are quite well aware, and we've had feedback from other land use people and realtors here, the availability of quality sites of this size are limited in Jacksonville, and we've looked at several and walked through several there. And so we, as an outreach, our organization had to weigh whether we're gonna allow the due process, timing of that, to keep us from making this opportunity of this purchase here. We've worked, based on our performance and all, we were able to secure sufficient funds to actually purchase this building, we are the owners of that, we are working to that process. We would like, we recognize we're gonna have to reorganize our five-year plan, our five-year plan based on initial application for the community development block grant funds, where to prioritize the shelter, and then come back in and subsequently put the administration and the soup kitchen, those types of items there. Recognizing the, having to reorganize that, we're looking, the Flex Build Vet Building, the sprinkler system, which we have that, and that's our next priority upon purchasing of that, is prioritizing resources to install that sprinkler system, which would give the significant flexibility of that building to allow individuals to be in there and be present. We've been very fortunate to be able to operate under some temporary COs when we've done Christmas cheer in the past, but we recognize since that building has been out of commission for a while, although it's in excellent quality, a sprinkler system is critical, and we want to make that a priority, and we'd appreciate consideration of City Council tonight to see if you could share with us in that priority, because that opens up just to the outreach and to Christmas cheer, but to other organizations and all, who we would like to use that Flex Center as this transition comes into play here. It would also significantly lower building and construction costs there once the full building is under sprinkler system. I'd be glad to take any questions at this time.
Yes, Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Herring and the outreach for everything that you do. My vote in favor of the original project was specifically to relocate the homeless shelter, and you all made a commitment to provide day activities and accommodations.
Yes, sir.
And I supported using the community development money for that purpose. This is a different purpose, and I understand the situation that you're in, the legal issues and everything, and I know that, but for that, I kinda felt that you all were proceeding along the path that you had, the vision that you had described to us earlier. Barring the lawsuit, I understand that if the lawsuit turns unfavorably, you won't be able to do what you indicated, but for that, assuming that you prevail with the lawsuit, does your intention remain to relocate the homeless facility?
Yes, sir. Our intention is the size and access of the building at 1210 Harker Street, and keeping also what planning, what we have committed to with the planning, and also committed to twice in front of the board here, of the five, not to exceed 5,000 square feet inside that 27,000-square-foot facility, to provide access for day shelter and night shelter, resources there. Our commitment is to get all of our items from 600 Court Street to 1210 Harker Street, and barring the outcome, and should the litigation not be favorable, we're going to come back again and request, we're gonna go back through the process again, recognizing that we continue to strengthen our case for why we should be there, and we will, and by then, we'll also have shown by our efforts, not by our words, that we are a good neighbor, the improvements we've made to the building, the quality of things we're offering there, so we will just be back to, but we're hoping through due process of the court system that we'll prevail there too, but we stand prepared to continue to go forward. But our intent is to move everything from 600 Court Street to 1210 Harker Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. Herring? Thank you, Don.
Thank you, sir.
Lily, I got a question for you. All right, so we're gonna use $150,000 to install a required sprinkler system in the building over there, it was formerly, it was the Piggly Wiggly over there in New River. That was a total of $250,000, and that, my question is, are we still under some obligation with the granting agency as to the disposition of the remaining funds, as to what that can be used for?
Yes, sir. We're still required to spend down our CDBG allocation by May 2nd of 2016, so this project moving forward would have to facilitate us meeting our compliance.
Sir, that's one of, pardon, Mayor and council, that's one of the reasons why the county is supporting only $150,000. We believe that the engineering work to design the sprinkler system and the installation of the sprinkler system can all occur prior to May the 2nd. There are also incidental funds, for example, let's say that the sprinkler system bid comes in at $120,000. The motion that we're recommending to you gives the Alonzo Community Outreach the opportunity to do other improvements in the building, so for example, if they can do some demolition during that time, but the key is, this money, if you approve it, has to be totally spent by May the 2nd. We have taken other staff actions so that we will not lose community development block grant money. In the workshop tonight, you talked about a splash pad. Part of the money that we're required to spend and want to spend for the betterment of the low and moderate-income community will result in the development of the splash pad, so we are currently on track so that we will not lose that federal money.
And that was my other curiosity there, was there additional funds, say like that additional $100,000, if something came up that could benefit, you know, because we really pledged $250,000 in this project, would there be other opportunities for us to use that remaining $100,000 to assist them in other parts of that building, you know, bringing it up to code or speed or whatever?
There is the possibility, and anything above the 150 would have to come back to you.
Right, okay. All right, that's the only question I have, thank you. Any other input from council? With that said, what we're looking for here is a... Stand by, tech guy. He's going to sleep here. Motion?
FY1415 Annual Action Plan.
Right, so we need to amend the action plans.
Appropriate.
Right, so I would entertain a motion to do that.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to authorize community development staff to amend the FY1415 Action Plan and reappropriate the funds for this purpose.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right, so that brings us to, I don't think anybody's come or gone, so we're not gonna go through the public comment thing again, but we will go to the reports. That's a, that's a... So we'll go to the reports, and I'm gonna start with, Mr. Ward, are you prepared to start?
Yes, sir, I am. Mr. Mayor, just proud to be here, and thank you, never forward.
And we're proud to have you here, sir. Easy.
Never forward.
Just congratulations to all of our city employees that was recognized today for their longevity, thank you for your commitment and your services that you give to the city of Jacksonville each and every day. Thank you.
Mr. Willingham?
Shout out to that day. Mayor, earlier in our workshop, we recognized Mr. Mayor Lieutenant Michael Lazar for being, gaining the position of Second Vice Chair for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and that is just a tremendous accomplishment. That is huge, because that puts him on the stage to succeed to the leadership position of all of the municipalities in the city of Jacksonville, and it's just very good that we have a representative from the city of Jacksonville who's doing that. I checked with my historian to the left, and he's informed me that former Mayor Bruce Techie was the last person, well, the only person that we had from the city of Jacksonville to be the president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Is that correct?
That's my belief.
Okay, so, and I do recall former Mayor George Jones' participation with the Board of Directors and possibly an officer position, but that's a big thing, because that organization leads with securing the approval of resolutions and getting what...
Mayor, earlier in our workshop, we recognized Mr. Mayor Protem Michael Lazzaro for being, gaining the position of second vice chair for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and that is just a tremendous accomplishment. That is huge, because that puts him on the stage to succeed to the leadership position of all of the municipalities in the city of Jacksonville, and it's just very good that we have a representative from the city of Jacksonville who's doing that. I checked with my historian to the left, and he's informed me that former Mayor Bruce Titi was the last person, well, the only person that we had from the city of Jacksonville to be the president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Is that correct?
That's my belief.
Okay. So, and I do recall former Mayor George Jones' participation with the Board of Directors and possibly an officer position, but that's a big thing, because that organization leads with securing the approval of resolutions and getting what we need from the state legislature, and it's good to see that participation on the state level, and it's good to see Angie participating with the National League of Cities. So that's just a part of what we do that can bring back rewards in the form of legislation from the state level and the national level, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willingham.
Nothing further.
Mr. Bittner?
I too want to offer my congratulations to Mayor Protem Lazzaro on this honor. It never ceases to amaze me, the influence pizza has. Not to mention very, very good abilities and interest in government, and I really sincerely congratulate you. No other report for this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lazzaro.
Thank you, Mayor. Pizza is comforting food, Mayor. Nothing, nothing, Mayor, other than thank you for your vote of confidence, and as you all know, I will do my best to represent not only the city of Jacksonville, its citizens, and all the municipalities in which we represent, which I believe is currently 540, and we will do our best, so thank you.
My congratulations also, it's an honor to have a member of this board to serve in that capacity, and I hope you'll just remember us all down here whenever you are the mayor. Again, I thank you, I want to especially thank you for all the stuff that you do, I mean, I wish I had a third of your energy to be able to pull off some of the stuff you do, but he's very active, very active.
What was your campaign, Stromboli in Every Pot or something, or Pizza Never Pops?
Pizza Works.
Maybe, maybe he can bring the conference to Jack. We got it.
How many years ago was that, Randy?
The only thing I have to report here is, I just want to bring to everybody's attention that there is an election coming up, a municipal election, and I encourage everyone that's listening to this to go out and vote, Tuesday, November 3rd. I think early voting's open right now, and opens this coming Thursday, so exercise your right to vote, and I encourage you, you know, to, whether it be local, state, or national, that you get involved in selecting your leadership. With that, I will turn to you, Dr. Bittner, for your report.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of quick things. Most of you attended a home hardware store this weekend and bought your wife a new leaf rake, and we appreciate that. However, we hope that while you were there, you also bought brown paper bags. I want to remind everybody, leaves need to be deposited in a brown paper bag, not the plastic bags that you dispose of your garbage in, so please, as your wife rakes, supervise her appropriately and get those leaves in the brown paper bag. Secondly, I would remind everyone, this coming Friday at 10:30 is the Beirut Memorial Observance at the Memorial Gardens downtown. We would hope that people would come out for that. Also, Mayor and members of council, I'm pleased to announce that your local youth council group has been working, and they won top honors as the best site, I'm assuming that's like a website, among other youth giving programs at a statewide gathering which occurred in Charlotte just recently on October 17th. As you know, Harmony was created as a program associated with the Jacksonville Youth Council and stands for Helping All Reach More Options Through New Youth Givers, or Harmony. And the purpose of that is to teach them philanthropic attitudes and to reinvest money. This year, the money for these donations came from a donation from the Eford Family Foundation and also from the city, provided in part through the Carrion Communities Foundation, an affiliate of the North Carolina Community Foundation, so congratulations to our young folks who were involved in that activity. As always, Mayor and Council, thank you for your leadership, it's an honor to serve with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bittner. With that, unless, oh, I'm sorry, John, I saw you, you're not giving us a report, I just... All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?